Everybody ready? Okay, let's go. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. Today is a committee of the whole meeting, a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. Call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, January 4, 2022. The time is 9:00 a.m. All members of the council, our present staff is available. We do have a quorum, and so we'll move on to the scheduling of 1 through 5. We have appearances, personnel building grounds, and other items of concern that we may go into closed session about. So, that being said, we'll turn this part of the meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. The mayor's first amendment agenda is a presentation from Wold Architects on a Virginia Public Safety Center project update.
Good morning, Mr. McNamara. Welcome once again to the cold ice of the Iron Range. And Mr. Wertz, thank you for coming from Crowe-Sandersen. So, what do we have for us today?
Well, good morning and happy new year to everybody. And we're glad to be here to give you a design update today. You'll hear more about this as the presentation goes on, but we've been working with Crowe-Sandersen since they were brought onboard to really get a handle on the building, costs, construction ideas, some of that type of stuff. And so, we do have a budget presentation today at the end of our presentation, and we'll spend some time kind of talking through what the implications of the market is and some of that type of stuff. But what I wanted to do today was kind of start out with a design presentation, because I think our last discussion with council was really related to the exterior design solutions that we have. Based on the feedback that we got at that meeting, we do have a new design concept based on that feedback that we'd like to get some feedback on today. We think that the solution that we have for you today is very, very much in alignment with some of the civic buildings that you're familiar with. It's very modern in its approach. We've kind of simplified the lines of the building. And as we talk about some of the materials of the building, the current design gives us some flexibility in what those final applications are. And so, the image that you have up there as our cover image is really the front approach to the building as you would approach it coming up on Second Street as you approach the parking lot. Our two-story area is up here where our administrative offices are for the police department and our sleeping and living spaces for the fire department. We have an entry element here to kind of bring everybody into the front of the building and a lower canopy to kind of give a little bit more of a human scale as we come into the building. The materials that we're considering for the building, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go around, could be precast, it could be a combination of brick and metal panels. And so, we have some suggestions in there based on the bricks and stuff that we had shown to council the last time. I think we had gotten some consensus around some of the colors. But be aware, we can achieve those same colors if we decide, you know, to go to a different material. We are considering precast on the building, and you'll hear a little bit more about that later. And we can apply a thin brick veneer to that and still use that product as we go. So, as we look at some of those materials, kind of keep that in mind as we kind of look at that. As I said, we'll talk a little bit about the exterior concept, just an update on the floor plans, just to make sure everybody's on the same page as what we're doing. But we do want to bridge into a conversation about some of the things that we're thinking about for the inside of the building, public spaces, office spaces, that type of stuff. And then, we'll spend quite a bit of time just updating everybody on the budget and the market that we have for it, and then answer any questions that the council has. So, as we kind of work our way around the building, so this is the approach kind of on the southwest corner of the building. This is our multi-story facility with the office space for the fire department on the lower level, our sleeping quarters and living space on the upper levels. The materials that we're considering at this point in time are a combination of brick on the lower part of the building with some metal panels on the upper part of the building, both in that gray color that we had looked at the last time, but also in what we're calling a chestnut metal panel. So, that is a textured metal panel that would have somewhat of a grain to look to it, similar to a wood product. It's actually somewhat similar to maybe a different color to what's on the convention center right now. But again, that is also a material that can be applied over other substrates as well. So, as we talk about flexibility in construction materials based on the market, we can still achieve that same look with the building. As we continue around the building, this is kind of a perspective heading south, looking at the northwest corner of the command garage, the first section of apparatus space where our ambulances will be parked, and then kind of a distant view of the two-story element that's going to bring some natural daylighting into kind of that upper-level office area. And up here, you can start to see some of that. Again, same bricks, so we're predominantly using this kind of mid-range brownish rusty brick for the lower part. Some of our design elements, we're looking towards a darker, warmer black brick on the building, and then kind of a dark gray metal panel for some of the framing elements on some of the upper parts of the facility. As we look at the rear of the building, this is a little bit more utilitarian back here. This is our parking lot for our squads, our parking for staff, and then our return entries into the apparatus space. We do have a stair tower, training tower on this side, too, with kind of a balcony element and some doors and some approaches that can be used by the fire department for exterior training. We do have an outdoor patio area that's up above and outside that break area that we had shown you before, nicely sheltered in the back here. That'll give some privacy to our staff that are using the building. And then, our police garage and our evidence storage area for the police department are over on the side as well. So, on the floor plan, so again, what you were seeing is our main entry at this location here, our training room, that lower band around that I just showed you is this area here where our evidence area, locker rooms, and our secure garage. Again, as a reminder, our command bay and our apparatus base are located in this area, and then our fire administration and circulation in the middle of the building. On the upper level, we do have that training mezzanine, which is also going to have some mechanical equipment in there. We have that outdoor patio area. We're not utilizing that entire roof area for it, but a good-sized outdoor area that will push back a little bit, that'll give it a little bit more screening from the parking area. Our shared fitness, defensive tactics, training area in the middle, our administrative spaces for the police department, our day room and living area for the fire department kind of occupy the rest of the area. So, the floor plan hasn't really changed that much since the last few meetings that we've had, so we feel pretty confident that we have hit all of the high points that people have been talking about and that we've been meeting with both the fire department and the police department. So, we feel pretty strongly that the floor plan, at least from a functional side of things, works the way that we wanted to, and we haven't really had any dialogue with either of the departments to make any changes to that since our last design presentation. So, as we start to work our way inside the building, so naturally, we want to start taking some of that feedback and some of the concepts that we have on the exterior and bring some of that into the interior of the building. And so, you can see from the floor plan on the right-hand side, this is kind of our main entry into the building, so this is what you would see as you walk in. The lobby of the public safety facility, so it's a nice, warm, two-story element with some of those windows that we had talked about bringing some daylighting into that space. We do have some transparency, but not full transparency, to the living spaces and stuff upstairs. We want to have some glass into that space, but more of a frosted glass or semi-transparent glass that we can make that space really feel open and inviting to the public coming in. We have a nice intuitive approach to a shared reception area as you kind of walk into that space, some casual seating in there, and some access to some of those interview spaces and stuff like that. So, a nice, you know, bright and inviting lobby. We are looking at materials on the floor, and we'll set up a meeting where we'll actually bring those materials up, but we just wanted to at least get that concept out there. We are looking at materials on the floor that are either a tile for durability or even potentially a polished concrete, depending upon what we end up with in our conversations with everybody. From a cost perspective, you know, one would tend to think that tile is more expensive, but a good-quality polished concrete is also, you know, a material that has some cost to it. So, some of those types of things we'll continue to talk about with Crowe-Sandersen, but a lot of the materials that we're picking are intended to be, and have been in our conversations with both departments, to be durable, long-lasting, and yet still bring a sense of character to the building that we're trying to achieve. As we continue into the other public spaces in there, this is the training center in there. You can see a design element that we're bringing in from the lobby with a slatted wood ceiling. Not only does it bring a nice warmth to the space, but it also has acoustical properties because it's, you know, a slotted ceiling, so that gives us the ability to control sound, not only in the lobby area, but some of these larger conferencing spaces that we have in there. But again, very simple elegant finishes on there. We may add some acoustical wall panels in there just to kind of bring the sound, you know, some of the echo that you get in a big space like this. Adding some sound panels on the wall not only gives it some character, but also serves a function of cutting some of the noise in that space. This is a image of the larger, open, living space up in the fire department. So, one of the things that we've talked with the fire department quite a bit is having some good communal space in there. And so, we have a large eating area, which is the image that you see here, but on the other side of that wall where the television is shown is also the, kind of the lounge area for the fire department as well. So, while we have a separation in there between those spaces, it does kind of flow together in there. And again, we're bringing that wood element in here to kind of bring some of that stuff through and to provide some acoustics in there, because one of the things we've been talking with the fire department about is potentially doing, you know, a polished concrete floor in there just to try to, you know, keep it looking good, you know, long-term. So, with a hard material on the floor in there, we do want to make sure that we have some other sound-absorbing materials in that space, so the wood ceiling, the acoustical ceiling you see around the perimeter, all will add to that effect. We are looking at some accent colors to kind of bring out, you know, kind of the character of fire department and the police department. So, as you kind of look at some of these design elements, we're trying to keep the walls in there fairly neutral, but with a slight amount of color on the walls, but have a couple of areas where we bring a kind of a pop of color into those areas really to give it some architectural feel to it that is appropriate for each of the agencies in the building. This is a image of the break room, which is in that center area, but, you know, mostly related to the police department. And you can see where we've kind of changed the colors a little bit as you come into this area, but again, very similar design elements to some of the other areas in the building. And this is an image of the open patrol area on the main level as you're heading towards the garage. So, again, in our conversations with the police department, that space is adjacent to the mudroom and the locker rooms, which are on the north side where those cubbies are, which then gives you kind of direct access out into the garage. The hallway leading to the garage is going to be, again, a concrete floor, but in the actual patrol area, we want to be able to cut down on sound, because this is where they're going to be actually working. And so, we're looking at a carpet material on that floor, but not just a regular carpet, but one that is suitable for, you know, wet environments, locker rooms, that type of stuff. So, it will still give us the ability to control sound in there, but it'll also hold up to some of the snow, water, all that kind of stuff that would be coming into the facility off of the garage area. And then, that's really, whoops, I need to go back the other way. So, with that, if there are any questions on the design, I would pause at this point, Mayor, and answer any questions. Otherwise, we can get into a conversation related to the budget.
Okay, thank you. I'll just get my questions out of the way first. I just have two. First of all, in the interior part, entrances to administrative offices, et cetera, I'd like the design of the Minnetoka Public Safety where the doors slid sideways instead of opening and, you know, giving that inviting space. I don't know if that's being considered as, no, I think that's, I would prefer that, but I leave that up to the staff who's going to be living in that environment. And the second, I just want to make sure that when it gets to the garage aspect of it, that the police department has enough garage space to bring all their vehicles in, and the fire department, of course, will have their base. So, that would be the question I have, make sure that if there are six squads, that they can all fit in, you know, in the garage space so they can maintain out-of-the-weather elements, you know, for immediate response. So, those are the only two issues. If those have been resolved, I'm fine with that. So, just for the sake of discussion moving forward. So, let's go around the room to our, I'll go left to right first. Counselor Paulson first.
Thank you, Mayor. Beautiful design. Little elements I see kind of pulling in and tying in with the, even with the current Iron Trail Motors Event Center, so it kind of ties nicely, actually. The one question that I have, and I'm sure you'll get staff input on this, but in the fireplace, I mean fireplace, in the fire lounge area, right there, yep, is there going to be any, like, couch or more comfortable type of lounging? I mean, they're there for long durations of time just for comfort, for relaxation. Will there be any of those elements other than kind of those more office-style chairs?
Yep. So, we have a couple other images, just for brevity. Today, we didn't bring them all, but on the other side of, so this image, you're really seeing this area, which is kind of the dining area. On the other side of this wall here is this kind of lounge area, which is where all that soft seating is located at. And certainly, we could, you can kind of see it out here a little bit, but certainly, as we get deeper into the conversations on furniture, if we want to add couches, that type of stuff, that would be something that we've worked with the fire department on as we look more to the furniture side of things, but we are planning a lounge area that would have more of that soft seating that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Biondich.
If you could just let the public know, my concern when we first looked at the design was the glass garage doors. So, could you share with us the reason and the efficiency of them?
I don't think we've made a final decision, Counselor, on the actual garage doors themselves as far as what the materials are. There is some tradition around glass doors in fire stations, and there are, you know, energy-efficient, double-glazed, insulated doors that we would spec for the building if we want to go to more of a glass look to them. Some of the other traditional materials that you sometimes see is the bi-fold doors, which is also a conversation that we need to have as far as budget goes for that and also how much glass that we would put in them. So, as we get into that budget conversation, we can have more dialogue as far as what kind of doors we should put on there. What I'll share with you is bi-fold doors are probably the best as far as response goes, as far as opening and closing and that type of stuff, but they do come at a premium. But currently, with the lead time on overhead doors, you know, right now, overhead doors are a terrible item to get right now, but again, we're fairly far out on the project. So, it would be, again, an aesthetic conversation to have as to how much we want to kind of show off the vehicles that are in there and that more kind of traditional, you know, fire station design aesthetic. And so, I would look for feedback from this group as to what we want to do there. We're showing it as a flexible thing right now that could be either glass, or it could be, you know, a solid garage door if that's the direction that we want to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm operating the camera so folks at home can see your design. I've got a question about the slotted ceiling. That seems to be the design element of the year. The new Parkview has it, our new building has it. Is there a value engineer, more effective, cost-effective way of doing that acoustical sound stuff? It looks great, but I've got to believe that putting each one of those wood slats up there and putting the lights in between there costs more than a, are there other opportunities to save some money on the acoustical value of those ceilings?
Counselor, I can answer it two ways, yes and yes. There are lots of materials that you can use that have different price points on them. The traditional wood-slatted ceiling, there are a lot of different ways to achieve that from a panelized construction to a actual, you know, slot, you know, slots where you kind of slide them on. That is not what we would recommend here. We're going with, you know, a traditional, you know, slotted wood ceiling. That's a kind of a panelized approach to putting it together, to try to ease the issues of getting access to it and taking it out if we need to. But certainly, there is more, there is cost to be saved if we go to a planer material, but our thoughts are to try to keep these design elements to very specific locations and not put it throughout the whole building.
And is there, is there the mechanical stuff above these? That's one of the things that we've noticed in the other building, is that it's easier also to access stuff above that if needed. Is that happening in these spaces, too?
We would try to avoid putting in diffusers and that type of stuff in it. We'd probably end up with more of a linear slot diffuser either along the edge or the wall.
I'm referring to the heating and other stuff above it. Like, is there, is that for ease of it?
We would, we would try to avoid that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing would be lights.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. As we move forward, Chief Nicholas, Chief Nicol, any issues so far? You're moving in the direction you want? Fire Chief Lewis and Assistant Fire Chief Frederickson, are we on the path you're looking for? Okay, thank you.
I like the aesthetics of it, I also like the...
And so, those are certainly decisions we can get feedback on and bring back as we move forward.
Yeah, and we look forward to that. And my only concern as part of the elected body is that we make sure that this is designed in such a manner that's going to accommodate the fire side, the police side, and the EMS side for decades to come, and they have an environment, a professional environment to work. After touring the Minnetoka facility particularly, I found that that would be, that was very well-organized and well-constructed in such a small confined space with the sliding doors in the office areas where they were appropriate, and then for the folding doors and how quickly that those doors open and close for access, ingress and egress, whether it's on the fires or the EMS side. So, I'm comfortable with that, but I would defer to, based on budget considerations, though, make an adjustment to our staff who's going to live and work there as a result. Any recommendations to moving forward? So, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Great. And Mayor, to your point, there's a lot of things that we're going to talk about from a budget side of things. Some of them are easy things to do alternates for, but I don't want to necessarily suggest that we put, you know, six or eight alternates in there. I'd like to be very thoughtful as we do that, because sometimes bidders get a little crazy when we do that. So, probably not unexpected is that our numbers are up quite a bit from our last presentation. We were hopeful that we would land in and around that $18 million in construction, but we've been working closely with, you know, Pat and his team. They've done an estimate, we've done another estimate on it, and we're sitting right at about $24 million in construction right now. Maybe, Pat, you want to share a little bit more on your observations, and we can kind of go through some of the soft costs, too?
How's it going? Throat's a little dry, so bear with me, apparently. So, yeah, based overall, the design that we received from Wold on that, we kind of used the market analysis of going through, did a takeoff, talked to a lot of different subcontractors, and the cost, like John mentioned, about $24 million. There are some contingencies built in and some inflation costs, knowing that the price of material obviously is volatile, you know, with the schedule to go through. So, roughly about $1 million extra to allow for that to go through. That's included in that number. That kind of progresses out to go through the design once they get the construction documents into that. And so, as we get in the weeds of everything, it is a relatively modest design from Wold, there was not a lot of extras. It was a very simple building that suits the needs. There's not a lot of extras, fancy materials. The biggest thing to consider is lead times and everything, steel, precast, roofing materials, overhead doors. Those are kind of certain things that we all need to, you know, think about. And as you get to the next slide, and that's where it kind of goes, we had some cost-saving things to switch to, going to all precast around and going with precast teeth for your roof structure. And one of the main reasons why that is savings, but you can get the material quicker than steel to go through, because a little bit of a trade-off going versus standard block and brick, because you essentially could probably start the block and brick quicker than the precast. It's going to take longer, but then you have different costs along for heat and shelter to go through, and it's the savings of precast, and you get the building done quicker, so...
One of the things to note, too, in our construction cost, we've moved to the site cleanup for the houses and the land area there. We've moved that up into construction, because it's really kind of been a, an estimate, you know, or at least an allowance, you know, from, you know, our past presentations, but had actually spent some time with a couple contractors to kind of get a rough estimate of what it would cost to do the removals and the site prep for that area. So, we've moved that up into construction, which has then changed our land acquisition numbers to be a little bit lower in there as well.
And I think what we're looking at here is, you know, I saw something on the, it was a report about the economy and how the costs for materials have substantially increased, and unfortunately, we're beginning at a time where there's such a volatile construction costs associated with the product that you're going to get, and the delay time, as you indicated, Pat. And so, they said anywhere from 26% to 40% increase in costs associated with materials in some areas. And so, that's an issue, and I know that's factored in here in your budget prep. In addition to that, by moving the demolition costs and the removal from, into the construction package, we are hopeful that as we consider the budget moving forward, that there may be some money available that we would apply for in a grant for some site preparation through the ITRP. Whether that's going to be something that we're going to be successful at, I don't know, but preliminary discussions indicated that there should be, there could be some money available for that, so that might have offset some of those costs associated by moving the demolition and the site prep from, you know, us into the budget. So, we may have, we could have some additional funding available associated with that moving forward. So, Pat, did you have something else?
Well, I was beginning that topic to go through, because this is going to be through requirement project, you know, so we'd have to have, there's different criteria you have to follow, whether it's solar panels or geothermal, whatever it may be. You know, we are carrying roughly $600,000 in there for geothermal, which I know that's not, however those costs can get applied to wherever you want it. But I know there are different grants out there to apply for to get solar panels or fields paid for. I don't know how easy it is to do, I have no idea, but, so there are different things, though, too, so that's more money to go through to offset to go within your building, ever since reduces the budget. You know, so there are those, take certain things to take in consideration and, you know, go in the bid market when this thing comes out, you know. Hopeful's not a very good strategy, but obviously, you rely back on getting good input for all, input from all the subcontractors and go through and...
Well, for me, it's about, I don't see anybody else late on yet. For me, it's about wants and needs, you know? We're up here with what I want, and I think we should, the design here isn't really a want. I think that the design is very modest in a perspective from a layperson looking through this kind of the stuff and trying to equate that to what the other facilities were built that we toured and for our new Iron Range Motors, Iron Trail Motors Event Center project, you know, how that give and take works and how much more cost is associated with that based on what we anticipated early on. We were able to muddle through that, and I think that... able to muddle through that, and I think that to be fiscally responsible and prudent, we have to make sure that this is a building that's a need. And so looking at your construction costs, yes, there's some contingencies, some different variations of all the garage doors and me, some others in the aesthetics, or the concrete floors are post-itile, whatever. Those things I think will be worked out within, with staff and with the people that are going to live and work there. And our job is to make sure that we can find the money for the budget, and if the budget is amenable to what the needs are of the department, not necessarily all the wants. I mean, wants can be, you know, added on later on in some respects, and others maybe not from a construction perspective. So I defer to the design committee and the design team, which is Carl Sanderson at Old and our fire and chief representatives and the others, councilors that sit, and moving forward. So I'm sure eventually we're going to have a little public hearing moving on down the road, but our job here today is to try to whittle down what we think the needs are. And from my perspective, what's listed in here, based on the conversation with the public safety and our staff, I think these are needs and not wants. So that's my perspective. So, Pat?
Another thing to keep in mind, too, is this is based on roughly a mid-August, September 1st construction start date. You know, knowing on the land acquisitions going, we can actually get the site ready. So, you know, that gives us some time to get materials ordered to go through. So I did include winter conditions to go through if we are starting foundations, because this is going to be roughly, you know, one to two months to get the site ready. But if we start there, the building's going to start, we can kind of work backwards to go on the rest of the site and sequence it. So starting footings of foundations, you know, mid-September, October 1st, there are winter conditions costs associated, which I did include. No one ever going to be going through.
And the rest of the site that's going to be prepped, you know, there'll be some space available for consideration of other things as well. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to read this. I think this came...
Ball print.
It's, it came digitally, too, so it's a little easier digitally. On the items, on the right-hand column, highlighted in yellow, some of those are the sewer availability charge, water access charge. That's not, there's some things that are not included. Those would be then added into the total cost of the project.
Well, so I based a lot of the history off the MECC. So for example, the sewer and water access charge, we were not charged. So assuming to go through, as far as working with the city to go through, I don't know if we would be charged on that. I assume not. So I don't...
Okay.
So I don't know those costs would be. Same thing with a lot of the state plan review building permit, I believe, like on the MECC example. The building permit's entirely private, so it's 18,000 dollars, whatever's waived. Excuse me. We covered the state plan review, but the city building permit was waived by the city. So based, I don't know why things would change, so based on that to go through. I know you shouldn't make assumptions.
Thank you for that. And then, I can't say that there won't be any change orders, because obviously we don't know that with costs and increase, especially with garage doors and things like that. But I do have a question, and I don't remember if this was addressed in the... And I don't know who, what contract it would be with, if it's with Carl Sanderson. But every time we had a change order for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, there was a certain, what was it, 1.5%, and that would include like phones, paper, faxes, some insurance. Did we eliminate that? It was my intention to have that portion eliminated, so if there was a change order, it wouldn't be that extra percentage. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but just trying to save costs on...
Yes, as far as auto allocation, you're referring to auto allocations to go through with that. So if our contract value increases, those kind of costs go with it. And I don't have a contract in front of me. Had to be more of a question for Bob Fitzgerald, because that's the language is in the contract. I don't know if that's a negotiation that...
And I don't remember. I know I had requested that that not be included, but I...
I don't know that off the top of my head. I can look it up and get back to you.
Because those, I mean, if you do start getting those increase in those change orders, that did add up over the course of time with the Iron Trail Motors Event Center?
Yep. So one thing to go through is, I know as far as like convertible liability insurance, that's our... We really can't waive that, per se, because that's, you know, if our contract increases, our insurance goes up. Just like auto allocations, I imagine that is something that we can negotiate.
We maybe, I'd appreciate looking into that if you don't remember. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Anyone else? Counselor Freely?
Can I ask, who's responsible for custodial work at, like, the fire hall currently and/or would be at that building?
The firefighters.
They themselves take care of it?
They clean their own environment. They have no staff there.
You're the police, but we have Mark, though, then.
Correct.
And the reason I ask that is because, just, you know, with the MECC, I mean, or the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, it appears one of the challenges right now is how to keep the thing clean. And, you know, five, six, seven months of the year, it looks like it does outside, and you have people coming and going, and they're tracking sand and salt and slush and slop all over. And materials that you're thinking of should be conducive to quick and easy cleanup for that type of environment, just kind of FYI. So, like, when you talk about tile, I would opt away from that as opposed to, like, polished concrete, because then you don't have growth lines and so on that can trap dirt and so on and so forth. So just ease of cleanliness, I think, would be a serious consideration for materials, especially floor materials, from my perspective.
Well, the one thing to go through, so right now, we actually have some snowmelt figured, basically concrete at the front of the entrances. We actually do have that included in our mechanical budget. Plus sludge and stuff to go through, you still can... Whoever's walking in, you have a good... Apparently, I have a snowmelt system figured at the entrances and the locks.
Counselor, I think your point is well taken. The building will require maintenance and long-term care and stuff like that. That'll be something to...
Thank you. Okay.
But we do have, we do want, we do want to at least have a conversation about some of the things that we've been talking about that we could consider as it relates to budget reductions. One of the ones that we've talked about, just anecdotally, as we've talked about materials, is we could go to a majority of the building with tip-up concrete panels and still achieve the design look that we showed you with an application of thin brick veneer. And we've done that very successfully at other buildings. Some of the Minnetoka facility that you toured has that same look to it. So we're not hesitant to put that forward as a potential savings. We would need to work with precasters to kind of figure out base spacing and some of that type of stuff, but it is certainly an option that we would recommend looking into. It also has some advantages from a construction side of things, as we look to, you know, being a little bit flexible with the schedule. So there's a potential $600,000 savings if we go to the maximum amount of precast on the building. So keep that in mind as we develop the solution. We do want to take a look at some of the programmatic elements of the building. We do have two stair towers on the apparatus garage, you know, one on the east side, one on the west side. The training tower on the east side, we think is pretty important to have, but the other one, which is being used as a design element, and also access to the mezzanine, we could consider eliminating that design element and saving roughly about $165,000. If we could figure out a way to reduce the number of garage doors, because it is a fairly large garage, the garage doors are fairly expensive, and so we could save some money in that category. I put it in there only to have a conversation about it. We'd have to really kind of look at base spacings and how we would do that. So I don't want to overpromise on that, but I do want to put it on the table as something we could consider. We do have a storm shelter in the building, and this is a, is designed around the state code, which has very specific requirements on separation, ventilation, power requirements, and all of that stuff. And we have it located currently on the north side in the locker rooms of the police department, because it's required to have bathrooms and all that kind of stuff with it. To be clear with the council, it is only designed for the occupants of the building. So it is not a storm shelter that can be used outside of the building. Because of the latitude that we are at up here in Virginia, it falls outside of the zone that is required by the state code. But we have designed it into the building because it is a public safety building, and it is a requirement in public safety buildings if you're slightly further south in the state. And so we think it's somewhat a best practice, but it does come with a cost to it, because there are very strict requirements for that. We're actually even carrying money in the budget for a third-party code review of it, which is required by code. So there are some ancillary things that come with it that we just need to make sure the council is aware of. And it does have a premium to it that we've, you know, come up with is about $500,000 to the project to include that storm shelter in the building. And so if somebody asks me, is it required, I can tell you that it isn't. But it is, is it a good best practice? You know, one could argue, yes, it probably is. Pat talked a little bit about the geothermal. We have $600,000 in the mechanical budget for geothermal. This is really related to the B3 stuff. Now, we can offset that with some solar, and there are more options available to you for either, you know, direct purchase or lease-to-own or grants and that type of stuff. So there is the potential that we could eliminate the geothermal and go to a more solar-based solution. We would have to find more room for solar, because we're maxed out with just, including the geothermal we have in there. We have a good chunk of the roof already covered with solar, so we might have to go to some amount of ground-mounted solar in order to offset the energy piece that's required by code. I know that you went through a little bit of this with the iron trails, but from the time that you built the iron trails or designed it to today, the requirements for B3 have actually changed to be more restrictive. And so what you could get away with on that building, you cannot get away with on this building in order to, you know, comply with B3. So there is some offsets that we have to come up with. But if geothermal isn't something that we want to do, either with the utility, you know, and some of that type of stuff, because the payback from your utility isn't as great as what other areas are, it might be more advantageous to go to a solar solution. But, you know, we need to, we need to decide that as we go into the final design stage on it. We could look to reduce square footage in the building. If you look at K.A.'s budget, that were right around $360 to $370 aggregate per square foot. So every square foot you take out of the building reduces cost. But we would, the reason I have it on there is TBD, because I would need to spend some time with each of the departments to really think through what we could take out of the building, and then have a conversation with council as to what does that take away from some of the programmatic pieces of it, and what are we giving up in order to do that. Similarly, with the garage space, there is a lot of garage space on the building, just by the nature of what it is. But if you reduce some of that garage space, either at the command garage or at the apparatus space, you know, we could save some money there as well. But again, that gets to the future proofing, and, you know, are we then meeting the needs? But I think it's, you know, beholden on us to at least bring back to council some ideas on how you could save money. Ultimately, we would look to you for some decision-making on if we should explore those options or not.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the rest of the council, we've got three lights on. So you touched on B3. So just, if you have a percentage, and just generally speaking, you know, the B3 requirements, which I read as painstakingly as it was to read through that stuff, it's significantly more restrictive. And so the percentage of the budget associated with that for B3 compliance, because not only do we have to have B3, we also have to get state money as a result of that, so we got to meet these restrictions. So what is, what percentage would that be to the overall aspect of the budget? 20%? 17% approximately?
Not quite that high. I've heard numbers as high as 8%.
How much?
8%.
8%, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Counselor, Counselor Beyondich, and then we'll go around the room.
Thank you. And mine is a very simple question. Are we able to get a copy of all that you're showing us? Because I'm having a really hard time reading it off of this.
Yes, we have an electronic version of it that you can all have access to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beyondich. Counselor Paulson, and over to Counselor Birbou.
Thank you, Mayor. When you were discussing the storm shelter requirement or that area, it just brought to mind that you're pretty much in that blasting zone from Cleveland Cliffs, I believe. What is the durability on that, on precast, if there's any seismographic activity going on in that location? And then the, I live not too far from there, and I know, I know Cleveland Cliff says that it's, it's, they've got new blasting methods or whatever, but we still, we still feel a pretty powerful vibration, and we're still seeing things in our ceiling, you know, and it's happening faster than it did prior, because they're, obviously, they're just because they're closer. How would that impact that precast? And if, in fact, there would be a damage on that, how would, how would we deal with that?
Feld engineering question that I may have to get back to you, but anecdotally, I would say that most of our engineered solutions are designed to take that stuff into consideration. So if there is something related to that activity, our engineers would take that into account as they engineer the structure for the building.
Does the precast have any kind of flexibility within it?
If you look on the outside, like, precast panels, if you go to Iron Trail Motors, is the coxtrant going in there? And you'd have the same thing, too, with same issues, whether you do block or brick, the vibration. Structural engineers would go through and how the building ties together and goes to your foundation. Probably answers your question, but...
It does, but I just, so there's no actual different building materials that should be considered because of the location and the activity that frequently happens?
Mostly seismic connections really are in the connections versus the materials themselves.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Go to Counselor Birbou, and then over to Counselor Johnson. Counselor Birbou?
I've got some questions on the panels, the solar panels and the geothermal. Have you checked with the county, because they put in a combination of both in this new building next door, I believe, geothermal and, and solar panels? What is the differential of savings in either way, the combination or not? I've had some friends that built brand-new houses when they've come up here to do an estimate, if they can use solar panels. They don't have enough room to do things that they want with solar panels because of the heat differentials and the lack of sun up in this area up here, and the snowload that doesn't help, doesn't help any. And with flat roofs, you're going to have some snowload, even though you may have the panels tipped. So my thought is that the geothermal combination is the better combination, even if it's more expensive. But what's the long-range differential in cost for savings of either way? Do you have any estimates on that yet?
I, council member, I can get them for you. I don't have the data on it right now. We are working with a solar designer right now to size the solar array based on available roof area and the location of the building and sun angles and stuff like that. I would agree with you that a combination of solar and geothermal is probably the best approach. That way, you have the greatest amount of flexibility in the solution. But your utility up here, which we've, you know, talked to, Excel down in the metro area gives a much better return on investment on geothermal, because they buy back at a higher rate than what you can do up here as far as the solar goes. So we have to, so the balance between solar and geothermal really has to take into consideration how much you're generating. And because the buyback from the utility is different than, you know, it's like, I forget, like 20, 25 something or other per kilowatt hour type of thing. I could get you the exact engineering on it, but it's, your payback is higher with a full solar solution than with geothermal.
That's just because of our utility policy?
Yep. And so if we're open to a combination of solar and geothermal, and we want to stay with that as our base design, which frankly works better with B3, we could get you the actual numbers that our engineers have come up with as far as what the cost is and the annual savings that go along with it.
Okay, so if you could do that, and then if we need to work with our utilities to get them to change their policy, because I know what their policy is over there, so that would be our prerogative to go over there. And we actually own the utilities, the city does, so...
And as you're aware... And as you're aware.
There could be some changes made.
As you're aware, we have plenty of site to do geothermal, whereas we have less site available for, at least on the building, for solar. But I think, to be very clear, we will have some amount of solar. Just how much solar will depend on the geothermal answer.
Because I know those couple of friends of mine that were looking at these new homes. They went away from the solar and just went with straight natural gas because the cost wasn't effective enough with the, with the solar on a brand, on brand-new homes. You couldn't do enough savings. It's cheaper to use natural gas.
Good observation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just rip the Band-Aid off. And we, we need to reduce our budget by 5.14 million dollars based on what's in front of us. And I'm going to be very blunt about the command bay. We just had a very long discussion about not parking police cars that are running all day inside a garage because we've never parked them inside the garage. I'm going to have to go with that same logic for a command bay at the new department. We've never parked our command vehicles inside. Why should we start now? I think that we really need, if we need to cut square footage, we need to start looking at cutting square footage. The command bay should go away. During our last design team meeting, I had, I brought up the emergency shelter. It's a good in theory, but I feel very strongly that our personnel will not be hiding in the locker rooms for, during an emergency. They're going to be the ones that are out on the streets, keeping people safe, trying to clear, clear, the fire department's going to be out clearing streets, the police department's going to be out helping people. I think we need to really look at, at the feasibility of a shelter and the size of it, and who, how many people it would actually need to hold, especially since, as it was brought up, is a, it's just for the occupants of the building. So I think that might be a way to look at, at budget cuts. Some of the other notes I had, I'm wondering, you know, there's a lot of kind of cubicle space in the police department with only a few office spaces. I'm wondering if we can do something similar in the fire department space, if there can be more cubicles, less wall construction, that kind of stuff, and bring some costs down in that area. And I see that's on your list. But even if we did everything on this list, we're still 2 million, 2-plus million dollars short of meeting our budget. You know, I, I, unfortunately for walled, we just did this with a big building. And yeah, it looks nice to have wood-slotted ceilings, and it has a good feel, but let's be practical. I mean, design versus what we actually need. And I think that it might look nice, but we may really need to look at doing very utilitarian interiors, especially in the workspaces. There's, in the public safety building, there's very few public spaces that will be utilized by the public or even seen by the public in general. And our fire department and police department have gotten by for 100 years. And they're both very good at getting by. And I don't want them to get by anymore, but I think we need to be practical about what we're building. It's, it's not a showpiece. We built that already. Our showpiece is over on Ninth Avenue and Eighth Street. This is a utilitarian building that we need to be very budget-conscious about, and we need to make sure that we are going with what we need. I don't think we need slotted wood ceilings because it brings the design aesthetic and warms up the space. Can we, I'm very, would like to see some very practical cost savings when it comes to stuff like that. One of the things that, that we don't know and we won't know for a while is the efficiency and the cost savings of our utilities. We're in a 100-plus-year-old building where all the rooms are connected. The only difference between the living space and when the big doors opened downstairs is a couple of, a couple of doors at the top of a staircase. In the new building, my understanding is there's going to be a couple of separations between the living space that needs to be heated to 70-some degrees as opposed to the garage space that doesn't need to be heated to 70 degrees. There can be some differential. So the long-term efficiencies of a new building and the coming and going, I think, is one of the things that when we look at our utilities that we can't know until we're four or five years out, just like with our new, the new event center. We don't know what those utility savings are because we, we can't compare. We can only guess what it was, and we can only look at what we're doing moving forward. So I, I think that we really need to look at what the absolute needs are when it comes to this building for the safety and, and health of our employees on, on a day-to-day basis. That list is great, but it still doesn't get us, and I know, you know, what we did with the event center is we just said, okay, we'll find the money. And poof, we found most of the money, still made some cuts. But it's also generating revenue. The building we're in now is, the, the, the concession stands are making a couple thousand dollars a day when they're open on weekends. There's not going to be a concession stand in this building to generate revenue. Counselor Freedley, to your point about maintenance, you know, you're right, this building's going to have to have its own little community and staff. The firefighters do do their own cleaning, but how often do they get an opportunity to deep clean, to make sure they're, they're just mopping and, and getting by? Again, they're doing what they can. So I, I would like us to have the hard conversation of how do we shrink the square footage? That was brought up in the design meeting, that we're at the point now where we've, we've pretty much value-engineered as much as we can. I love that term, instead of cost savings, and we value engineer. So I would like the council to really consider how do we make the bill, right-size the building when it comes to the needs as opposed to some of the things that we've always lived without and would like to have. So that's my perspective on this as we move forward. I appreciate knowing that garage doors are several years out. And, you know, that's the reality we live in, and we have to be ready. I appreciate that there's a lot of money built into contingencies that we can't, we can't change, that we, that aren't change orders because we've changed something or you've found something. It's a change order because you can't get that anymore. So I think at the new building, we're still waiting for our projectors for our ballroom. And we ordered those probably almost a year ago. So, so those are my points for now. It's just really, it's time to start cutting some stuff that isn't, that, that isn't essential to the operations of the facility for either department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Johnson. No other lights on right now. So I guess I'd like just to make a couple of quick observations, if I may. First of all, you know, we have, this is a preliminary budget. We're looking at cutting down the budget. There's a lot of suggestions that we can and can't do. You listed out some of the cost savings that we could consider moving forward. We're still a little short on where we're going to be at. But for me, it's about, we're in an environment where the costs associated with building facilities are a lot higher than it would be. So the option is, is to continue to move forward. We're providing a state-of-the-art facility for decades to come, for our staff to work in a professional environment moving forward. So by doing the value engineering of what we need to be doing, that's fine. I guess I, as an elected body, I, I'd like to a little, a little bit more about the storm shelter, whether that's really actually necessary. Yes, it's probably something that's being considered. That's a half a million dollar savings. I'm, I'm willing to look at that. But as far as the other things go, the reduction of the space, these are the space allocation needs of our department. This is what they need. I, what happens if we have to expand in the future? What happens, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in our employee group. We don't know if we're going to be consolidating or moving forward or, or merging with another community where this might be the main facility in which our, our district or EMS district would operate from. So I think we have to keep that in mind for the long-term moving forward. So I think the way it's designed myself, you know, yes, as Council John's indicated, well, we've, we, we said, well, this paid, we looked for the money, we found it. Well, that's our job, really, truly, truly, is for our staff, particularly our finance director and our, our, our city administrator and others to move forward, and us with our legislators and looking for grant opportunities. Those kinds of things, our fire chief and, and police chief to look at issues with respect to some of the fire council, whatever he's done, to try to bring some of those funding forward. But I think we have an obligation to provide our community with the health and safety and security of the long-term for this community. We invested a lot in the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. We made some cuts, made some adjustments to that, we did. And we came out with, with a product that's really good. We have another committee that's west of us that's going to be doing the same thing, and they're going to dwarf the, the Iron Trail Motors Event Center with a potential proposal of 344 square-foot facility, which, which, which completely, we're dwarfed by that. So looking in the head for the future, I think we have to look at, try to find the money if we can. Then, you know, let's move, let's cut each one as we move forward if we have to. But I can't see, from my perspective, with all due respect, is cutting the cubicle space inside because there's, there needs to be room for expansion. You got turnout gear, you have, and they've hired, you've got the cold zone, the warm zone, the hot zone. Those all have, you can't make adjustments to that. So what are you going to make adjustments to? Their living space, their cubicle space? I think as a group, as a design team, I've, I've stayed out of it because I think it's the design team that makes that decision and makes these suggestions. And we all have a perspective on what we think needs to be done. But I really believe that it, it is a facility that's going to serve us for decades to come. And talking to some of these other mayors, some of these other organizations, they made that same decision about, you know, they were over budget. They had to try to figure something out. Minnetoka was over budget. They made some adjustments to accommodate, but they didn't compromise on their living space, they didn't compromise on their office space, they didn't compromise on the response space. So I think, whether you have, with all due respect, Council Johnson, I mean, you know, I, I think you have a valid, valid point about, you know, how many vehicles are we going to park in there? We considered the, the base bid for the police garage replacement and the expansion of the garage replacement, looked at the value of that, what cost for additional 600 feet of space, what that cost was, it's associated there. So we decided to go with the base bid. But this is a brand-new facility. You know, this old facility where we replaced the police garage, it's going to accommodate three vehicles. Police are going to be parking there after this new facility goes moving, nor are the fire department, obviously. And having to have these command vehicles parked outside plugged in, this is an investment that we're making in our equipment, our personnel, in our ability to, to conduct immediate emergency response, and the combination of a tactical and, and critical incident response through fire, EMS, and command staff as you move forward to on-scene command post opportunities. So you have to have the ability to respond as quickly as you can in that regard. And watching these vehicles plugged on the outside, covered with snow on a regular basis and the ice and things of that, I think that over time, we have to consider making sure these vehicles can respond to emergency, whether it's police, fire, or EMS. So from my perspective, I think, you know, we have to get some cuts, I agree. But I don't think, you know, and as far as the lighting and the ceiling goes, I mean, you know, whatever the design team decides, from my perspective, that's fine with me. But I'd just like to say that I think we need to really consider those kind of things with the budget. And yes, we have to make some cuts. I agree, Council Johnson, we have to make some cuts moving forward. But where those cuts are going to be would be significant. And the storm shelter one is, I'd, I'd take a look at that, and I'd like to get more information about that. But beyond that, I, I think that we have to figure it out, it, moving forward. It's unfortunate that the costs are so high because of the environment that we live in. And we can't stop the bus. You know, we got to continue to move forward, which we are doing. And part of that money that we got from the state legislature was site acquisition. We chose that site to do that. So that took money away from our construction project itself. So I have a lot of other things I'd like to comment on. But that being said, those are my thoughts moving forward. Yes, costs have to be made, but I think we have to be prudent as we move forward with that. And I, and I, and I concur with the geothermal, solar combination in that regard. So, Council Paulson, and then over to Council Beyondich.
Mayor, this might be a question for our finance director. What, or any of you, what are our funding sources? I'm assuming there'll be a combination of maybe grant dollars, maybe matching funds, IRRB, and then obviously some bonding. What, what other sources of funding are we expecting or could we expect to look for?
Thank you. I can answer that, Sherry.
Great. Thank you.
We're going to try to, we're applying for USDA loan, a 40-year loan. We have the state funding for the first phase, which is phase one, which is acquisition, demolition, and site preparation. We will apply for an IRRB grant for utility infrastructure. We may qualify for a CDBG, but CDBG is, again, intended for low-to-moderate income area. And once we remove all the houses, all the low-to-moderate income area goes away. So that is a kind of a gray area. However, CDBG is for the benefit of a low-to-moderate area community. And so public safety centers do technically qualify as it would benefit the entire community. So there is a, we've had the discussion with CDBG that we do intend to apply for them also. So that's a tentative discussion. Pat kind of alluded to, if we end up going to solar, we will try to get some credits since there are some grants that are continually, you hear about them manually. There is some solar grants that are out there that they're trying to get renewable credits back into the state for any business to try to get solar back into the grid. So we are going to try to apply for every single grant we can. The only ones we know that we have solidified is the state bonding money. And we are pretty sure that USDA, they haven't given us the final approval, but they're still talking to us. So we're pretty sure we're on our way to the USDA loan.
Okay. So that being said, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at is 40, you said a 40-year? 40-year loan. And that's not a bond, that's an actual loan. Okay. And then the, the actual life of the building, would it be called a useful life? Just like what we kind of experienced at the hospital, we were almost in an upside-down fashion there because it was 125% or 130% of its useful life. So like, I'm trying to understand how to justify the entire budget of what we're looking to do without having to undercut the actual needs of each department. So is there a formula or a, so you could pass that formula along so maybe I could understand that a little bit?
Council member, there's not a formula, but as part of the pre-design for B3, we have to put in there life expectancy of different systems in the building. So everything has a different longevity based on usage and stuff like that. Mechanical equipment that's used every day has a life expectancy of, you know, 20 to 30 years. But the structure of the building's probably 150-plus years. And so what it averages out to be, at least per the pre-design report that we submitted, is about 75 years.
Okay.
But anecdotally, what I will tell you, a building will last forever if it's well-maintained. And so as long as you're reinvesting in your building, replacing mechanical systems, keeping water out of the building, replacing those things as they wear out, theoretically, your building will last as long as you need it to last.
So as a, as a business owner, I look at cash flow and payments. So the sustainability to me is what, what kind of payments we can afford to make and how we, how we budget for, because they'd be payments. Anything above and beyond a grand would be in the form of a payment. So do we, have we kind of set a preliminary, I, I mean, I'm not a part of the design team, so maybe you guys talk about this in your, in your pre-planning phases. But is there a certain number of a threshold that the city can handle in the payment capacity, monthly or annually, however that, whatever that looks like? Because, and not to get in the weeds on this, but if you add 2 million or whatever, you stretch those payments out, it's still, it's an incremental, it's, it's not maybe as painful stretching it. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Sherry?
Thank you. Mayor, Council, Council Paulson, yes. In the initial USDA talks about the loan, it was a very low-interest loan. And we're talking 1.4. I don't know if we're locked in with that now that we've actually, you know, did an initial application. That's a case that is a pretty decent payment or over 40 years. But obviously, this has kind of ballooned since we first initially, you know, said, well, 20,000. And it would be a multiple of things. We already have X amount of dollars set aside that we budget every year for operations and maintenance for the fire hall and ambulance. So those funds would obviously go towards this new building. But in addition, we'd probably have to levy if we were short because, like was mentioned earlier by Council Johnson, this isn't a revenue-making.
Correct.
And rightly so. It's a service organization. But that doesn't say, okay, we're just lost for words here. Now we, we don't know what to do. I mean, there's still, I know that the chief, fire chief has been actively looking at, you know, different grants and seeking funding for the district, you name it. I mean, that's not, hasn't been given up. No.
Okay. And that makes sense. I mean, I, what I'm trying to justify is the, the useful life of the building is a lot, is a lot longer actually than I expected. So that's lot longer actually than I expected, so that's interesting. But based on that, you know, on a 40-year, 1-point-whatever-percent interest rate, our bonding is higher than that. Is that correct?
Yeah.
1-point, I can't remember what the last one was.
It's more, it was almost 4%.
Yeah, so, I mean, so that's, that's the kind of analysis, though, that I'm looking to receive, and I don't know who can provide me that. So is there a cap on what you could ask the USDA for on that loan amount?
Yes, and I believe it's 18 million.
Okay.
Why we're coming to you, telling you we are over budget, because there is a cap that they're going to allow us to get. So we will have to find other funding sources if the council's telling us that we, we know we're over budget, but we still want to go ahead.
Can you go back to that previous slide there?
Then we will come to the council and say, okay, good, then we need to find a different way to fund this. So we need to know the council's direction, what do you want us to do? We either need to cut, to live within our means and come down to the budget that we set previously, or we need to find another way to fund this on top of the two sources we have, which is the state bonding and the USDA.
And Pat, can you just explain, I had to roll over here to go to see this. So when I go to the bottom, I see total project cost of 26 million, but you were referring to the 18 million in the other column?
I remember, I was.
I thought maybe.
So in schematic design, we, hey, we're projecting about an $18 million construction budget. We're currently at a little under $24 million for construction. Of that 24, a million is set aside for, you know, site cleanup and stuff like that, so you're really, you know, construction from where we were at schematic design, we're at 23 million versus 18 million. Our soft costs have gone down a little bit.
Total project cost, or is it?
Total project cost, we were at 26 million at schematic design.
Or 31.
Or 31, 31-1.
And we only have 18 million capability USDA, but we've already gotten state funding of how much?
Nine and a half.
9.5 million.
Okay, so if somebody could provide us that financial data, then I could.
It's in the top line of this very small to-read document. It has all sources of funding identified there. It has the nine and a half million dollars from the state, and then, I think we just put it in there based on where we were at SD, but having talked to Britt since then, you know, we understand that there's a little bit more that's available for the USDA piece of it.
Yeah, we had originally asked the USDA 16.5 is what we thought we needed, was our original budget when we first started talking. I think the highest USDA has ever funded a project is 18 million, but I will have to verify that. And 16.5, they have not committed to us, that is just our ask, that we had asked the USDA. We can go back to Tyler and tell him we might need a little bit more and see what they say.
Okay, but in order to move forward, this council has to make those tough decisions in a pretty short timeframe.
Short period of time.
Is that correct? So before we kind of get to that point, could somebody compile that information maybe a little bit differently? This is really hard to understand for me. I don't know.
Yeah?
I'm not seeing.
So, the detailed budget from Kraus Anderson in the top section has, you know, revenue, which is the money that you have available, at least for what we've been told. It has the nine and a half million plus the USDA funding piece of it, which totaled the $26 million that we presented at schematic design. And that carries over to the second column, which is why at the very, very bottom, you have the deficit that Councilmember Johnson talked about of the 5.1 million, because we haven't added any more revenue, because that's why we want to have this conversation. The next section is the construction numbers, which align with kind of the SD presentation button with a little bit more detail in there. The only big change there is I had asked Pat to roll the site prep demo numbers into the construction, because we're going to need to bid that work out, so it's a natural construction piece of it. And then the next section down is the project costs, which has all that detail that you had asked for in there. Some of the things you had noticed that Pat had adjusted in there related to some of the fees and stuff like that, based on his experience with you. We can certainly make some of those adjustments. Some of the other things you'll see in there, there is an estimating contingency up in the construction section of it. There is also a construction contingency, which is Kraus Anderson's at-risk contract. There is an owner contingency in there for, you know, what if, you know, unforeseen conditions, you know, something that's outside of what we would expect the contractor to do. We have a, we have furniture and equipment budget in there, just to make sure that we get you a total project cost, and those furniture and equipment numbers are based on our history with other public safety buildings. And then we, on top of that, have another $300,000 contingency at the bottom for the project cost section, just in case some of those numbers go up and down, say the environmental work costs more than what we think, or survey costs more than what we think. We have a contingency built into the soft cost part of it, too. So our intent is to give you a total project cost that includes enough buffer in it for some of these allowances, so that we're not coming back saying, okay, you've approved X amount, now we have to raise it to this amount because of this thing that we hadn't thought about. So it's trying to absolutely capture everything in that detailed part of it.
I apologize, it's really hard to read.
I know.
I am on the screen here and I should have looked at the screen.
And I apologize, Pat and I were working on this even late last night, so we only had access to a small printer to print it out.
So, to land the plane here, are we really talking about a discrepancy of 5.1 million?
From the 26 million that we presented at schematic design, yes.
Okay, and is that something that we could work toward absorbing possibly with the two current sources we have?
That's a really big.
That's a big ask.
It's a big ask, it's a very big ask. IRRB has never funded that much, they've, they will not commit that much to us, they've never committed, to our Iron Trail Motors Event Center project, they committed a million dollars, and that was through over four grants.
So, possible option would be the USDA stretching that out a little bit?
We could ask the USDA to go up a little bit, we could ask IRRB to pitch in a million, so we could try to get a closer.
And I don't mean to keep going on and on here, I just, I want to understand this so we can make the decisions.
Very important.
Yeah, and I saw one thing that I have a question on, and I don't mean to keep going there. The technology and security allowance, which it says new, $750,000. So when we did the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, I don't know what the square foot difference is between the new public safety and the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, but was it, it was?
Tierney.
Tierney and then Hunt? No, Tierney and, didn't we have two?
Mantheon and Parsons. That's the electrical contractor, they did all the rough. All of that, and then you have Perchkey, which did all the key cards.
Okay, is that 750, I think Tierney we were at four, four and a quarter, 125,000, I think for Tierney. Does that sound a little high then in the technology department?
It can be high if you make some decisions on what you, so we base this on our history with these buildings, what typically is installed. This would include all of the technology for the training center in there. This also includes the station alerting piece of it, it includes cameras, it includes all of the conferencing areas. So if you reduce that scope, then you can reduce that cost, and so.
I wouldn't want to reduce it, but I'm just saying the footprint over at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center is a lot larger. I guess I'd have to see what the scope of what you're looking at doing here. I wouldn't want to reduce what their needs are in terms of training or anything else like that. But it, for the smaller square footage, it seems like a very large price tag.
Not always fair to compare a square foot to go through of cost components. The main reason why is like you said, there's different things. Basically, yeah, you're right, it is half the size. Way more expensive equipment.
I'd like to see that part.
And we will, we're just not there yet. Our technology consultant, our internal people are, will put a final budget together for that. We have to make some decisions on what's included in construction versus what's going to be a direct cost, like from the Tierney Brothers and that type of stuff. And so, we will get you that detail on that, but.
That would assist us, and, I mean, that's three-quarters of a million dollars right there. I know we're going to need quite a bit of that, but I think our original budget in the Iron Trail Motors Event Center was maybe 200, 300,000.
250,000.
250,000, yeah, and then it went through the moon. But, I mean, this seems just, it seems a lot higher than maybe where it will land realistically. I'm not positive on that, but just a question that I have, and thank you so much for letting me.
I know there's already added costs.
You had to come up, the public can't hear you, Chief.
So, I was just saying, you know, some of the issues that come into play is our BCA connections, it's a little bit separate, so you're talking about essentially two different types of internet being woven into this building. Also, the servers, you know, we were talking about at this point with the new building, upgrading some of the current servers that we have, so there's quite a bit of cost there. So, but I agree, I mean, that does seem high, but, you know, again, with brand-new stuff, it's going to be expensive, no doubt about it. Hopefully, we can get it in time.
Thank you.
And I think, Council Paulson, as you look at, when we toured the Minnetoka facility and then the Richfield facility as well, when you looked at their data technology and what they put in there, with respect, I don't know how much they put in, it was a remodel as opposed to a brand-new facility, but they had, you know, there's, there's on their screens injected into that data proxy is that, so you could look at any screen in the fire hall or any screen in the police department that says Squad Four is on this call, EMS is on this call, ambulance is over here, fire is over here, so everybody knows where everything's at. So all that integrated into that for emergency response, know what's the availability, all that is added cost associated with what's above and beyond the needs of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. But yes, that's something we need to take a look at as well. And we do have to make some very difficult decisions on cuts. And I know that, you know, Council Johnson, we peel away the Band-Aid, it's true, we have to get our costs associated there and move forward to find ways to, I just want to compromise the long-term integrity of the service that we provide, because we're not going to have the same level of service we have today that we're going to have 10 years from now. It may be a lot more, and we may have a collaborative, but we will be, we will be the centerpiece as we are now for regional hubs, and this is part of that as well. So making the investment, I know the challenge for us is trying to find the money associated with that. So, thanks, Council Paulson, I think we all need that information as well. Council Biondich.
Also, in the yellow areas on our sheet here, could we get those verified with the city to know if there are going to be costs incurred or not?
It comes down to, are we going to make, are we going to let the public utilities charge us a water connection fee and a sewer connection fee? Or are we going to tell them they're not charging us a water connection fee and a sewer connection fee?
Okay, and with all these areas in the yellow?
I think we're going to make an offer they can't refuse.
And are we going to, are we going to charge ourselves a building permit cost? I mean, that's what it comes down to, are we, we're not going to, we usually don't charge ourselves a building permit cost, the state plan review we have to charge, but.
It would just be good to get those areas filled in, so they're not a question mark anymore. Thank you.
Was it safe to say that? We did not get charged those costs then? Verified with.
We're going to try.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure we're not going to charge ourselves those costs. We normally don't charge ourselves our building permit fee and our sewer or water connection fee. And I did want to report some good news, and I did think I did send you guys the email, Northeast Service Co-op actually applied for a grant to run fiber right through our public safety center spot, our site. So they got the grant, and they're going to be running fiber right through our safety center location.
That is good news.
It is good news, it saves us cost.
It is good news. So where we're at today, okay, we are going to be looking at finding a way to reduce some of the budget moving forward, this is the preliminary budget, I know we have to make a decision. There's questions and information that we've asked for moving forward, we hope to get that back as quickly as we can, so we can have another meeting to, you know, to really drill down what we need to do. And I would really refer to our construction manager, Chris Kraus Anderson, and you, John, and your staff at Wald Architects, and our emergency personnel staff, command staff, really have to make that decision on if there's cuts to be made, where can you make those cuts without compromising the integrity of the building, the integrity of services that you provide, and the long-term benefit of this building moving forward as we expand potentially services. And, you know, the big space that we have available, there's other opportunities for other expansion in the areas of public safety later on down the road, and there is some grant money, according to the ITRP, that could be, that could be available in that regard. But for this project cost itself, I think we have to look at what we need, and do you have what you need, John and Pat, with respect to what we're asking you to take a look at?
Mayor, yes, I may summarize a little bit.
Please do.
Sherry, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I did have a question. What is the ROI or return on investment for this geothermal? Is it 25 years old? What do you figure for that size of?
Probably in the right range, I can get you the exact number now that we have at least some idea that, you know, that's a good direction to move forward. We will follow up with the utility and as part of our, as part of our pre-design submittal, it has some of those numbers in it, I just don't have them off the top of my head. But it usually is in that 25-year range, yes.
And if the building's going to last at least 75, you're going to gain 50 years. You're going to make up money, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct.
So sometimes you can cut off your nose despite yourself.
So to summarize a little bit, there were some things on the value engineering sheet that seemed appropriate to look at, whether it's pre-cast and some of those other items on there. I'm not getting a strong sense that moving away from geothermal is the way to go, but we'll report back on the potential savings and that type of stuff with that. We will look at some material changes, so they will have some effect on the budget, but not a huge effect, but we will consider some of those things. From a square footage side of things, we will set up a meeting with the police department and the fire department, talk about, just reaffirm what we have in the building, and we'll come back with a report on some of that stuff. We can also come back with some suggestions for some alternates, so that you can make some decisions once we get some numbers in, whether that's garage space or apparatus space, or other things that are simple things for us to do. I can't suggest that we design a bunch of things, like, it's very difficult for me to design a storm shelter as an alternate, because it changes just about every system in the building. And so what I would need from council on that is a final decision as to whether or not we're going to include it or not, not necessarily today, but if, Mayor, there are some other information you'd like on that, we'll set up a time to go through the specifics of that. But if the final consensus is that it isn't needed, then we'll remove that requirement from the project. To keep us on track, we have slowed the design down so that we can have these conversations, but we do need to try to pick up speed on this again in February, so I would encourage some meetings here in January, and I'd like to come back to council later this month to focus specifically on the final budget, answer any final questions that you have that would give Britt and whoever some time to look at some numbers, and then we'll go from there. Does that seem like where we landed? Sorry to kind of rehash it all, but I need to make sure we're following all of that stuff.
Yeah, I think you've summarized it, what we need to do moving forward, so thank you. Questions by Council Bearbo.
I just, I'm on the same page as the mayor is about undercutting, because I project that the project will have more use in the future with our public safety, especially our fire department, because we're already doing more out-of-area stuff with the, with the fire department. I don't know about the police department, but I don't know if we go out of our city limits much, but I think we do help other departments all the time. So, I'm on that same page. Also, we've forgotten one thing, and I'm going to ask the fire chief this, and the police chief, both, if we're going to be using this as a central training session for other departments, there's going to be revenue gained there, because, and I don't see that list anywhere, so we have no idea what that'll be right now, but there will be revenue gain, because we're probably going to be charging someone, not as much as if they go away. So there will be some money generated every year for this project, so there is some revenue coming in, not maybe a ton, but I would predict probably, well, maybe $30,000 to $40,000 a year if we do all these trainings, for what I see for travel and all this other stuff that other departments make. So there's another thought, the chief can maybe include that in their next design phase, because you're on that design team, too. It's going to be revenue, not a ton, it'll be a ton.
And just quickly, and then we're done, thank you. But in order to add on to what you had to say, there is an organization down there, we had the Airport Police Department Professional Development Institute, they had the St. Paul Police Department Professional Development Institute, where it was, they have a big, we had big space, like you're going to have here, training. we had big space, like you're going to have here, training, state-of-the-art stuff, videos, conferences, screenings, state-of-the-art. So we would bring in speakers, we bring trainers from other parts of the United States, whether it's police or fire. For example, I'll just, I'll pick, as far as a lot, I'll pick police. You bring in somebody who teaches basic homicide training, just as an example, for the field officer, as when they come in, there's a homicide, they know what to do. Detectives already know what to do, but sometimes, so you bring that person in, and it may cost $2,000, and then whatever, and so then you charge, you know, your people come in there at no cost, and then you're charging other departments for that same training at 100 bucks a piece or whatever, so you generate some revenue as a result of that, and they've, you know, they've actually formalized that in a form, and I think that's something that you're looking at as well, both from the police and fire side. So just as a tack on to what you had to say, Council Bearbo, Council Freely.
Yeah, just from a practical standpoint, if you're going to be doing a cost analysis on a return on investment from like an environmental similarity, I know that the municipal building in Babbitt implemented a geothermal system in that facility, and I would encourage you to contact those city officials to find out some information as how that's been a good investment for them or what their return on investment timeframe was. I think that would be a good comparison.
Okay, thank you, Council Freely. Anything else? We do have a strategy moving forward and a list of asks from you and the design team, so anybody else have anything else, any questions or comments they have today? Seeing, anything for you, Pat, John?
I think we're good, I appreciate all the time you've given us today.
Yep.
Well, we thank you for your time, appreciate it very much.
Great, thank you.
Have a safe trip back. Thank you very much. Okay, should we go to item two and then take a quick break? Okay, thank you.
Item number two is a review request from Library Director Jody to advertise for hire of two library aides, which are casual positions for the Virginia Public Library. As you recall in our budget discussions for 2022, we mentioned that Jody was moving things around in her budget to put the library casuals back. We had laid off the two casuals we had in 2019, and due to COVID, when the building shut down, we did not hire them back since 2019, and because of the increased programming and because of Saturday hours, Jody is ready to bring back these two positions.
Thank you, do we have budget money in the budget for that? Okay, thank you very much. Jody, anything else to add for that request?
I left it on. No, but I can definitely, what Britt said, we are doing more programming, we are open Saturdays, and we need to get this started because we are starting the summer reading program, and if we don't have them in place, we are going to have to make some decisions within the next few weeks about how much we want to do this summer, because last year at this time, the library wasn't open to the public, so we were able to take the time to plan in a different way. Now we're open six days a week, so.
So the question is, the previous casual workers that we hired, would it be the same scenario as previously, is there would be change into what their duties and responsibilities would be?
We did update the library, we did update the job description to fit what we need. We need people to be in the afternoons, and we need to work on Saturdays, so that part has been updated, and then we just updated some of the language. They would do things like work at a service desk, they would return, help with check-in, they would shelf, they would help with programming, help with the prep of programming, which, you know, especially in our current, in COVID, we do a lot of take and makes, that takes a lot of prep, especially when you're doing anywhere from 50 to 75 individual things. So we just need to keep on doing this, we are getting positive feedback from Republic about the take and makes, about the programming, so we would like to maintain that.
Yeah, and I'd like to say you're doing an outstanding job with, in particular, I love that outside storyline where they were, it was just great to watch those kids do that, so.
There'll be something, Storytime starts again in, you know, at the end of January, so Ms. Stephanie's got all sorts of fun things planned.
You do. So the casual job descriptions changed, and they'll work how many hours a week on average?
Yeah, 14-ish, so.
And at the same pay rate? Very good, thank you, that's all I need to know. Council Beyondich.
So moved.
Moved by Council Beyondich, is there support? Support by Council Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing one, Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe no one wants to hear this, but I do have a question on the rate of pay. When we had talked about our casual at the Antrim Motors Event Center and the competition out there for jobs, that we increased the wage, and I know that's a sore spot, but I don't know if we're confident that we will get applicants at that wage, and I just wanted to throw it out there as a consideration.
I didn't budget for any increase, this is in the ASME contract.
Say that one more time, Sherry.
I said I didn't budget for a pay increase, and this is in...
But we haven't paid them, and we haven't had them in over a year.
This is in the ASME contract, so it'd take a little more than just...
I'm sure it would, it's just something I'm throwing out there, just out of being mindful of the current work, of the current employment situation. So that's maybe a can of worms, but I just want to throw it out there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and supported to hire the two casuals, later on down the road with respect to the pay, we're going to advertise it as is, and then if we have to look at additional, we could have a personnel meeting to do so. Thank you, Council Paulson, has been moved and supported to hire the two casuals or advertise for them and hire them, right? I'm sorry. Advertise, yes, thank you, to advertise, because we don't know who they are yet. So advertise to hire for the two casuals, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. You want to take a quick break or just move to item three real quick?
Really quick, if that's okay?
Okay, let's do item three real quick.
Item three is communication from St. Louis County regarding city's option to request reclassification of state tax forfeited land. John Sullivan and I have met with our building officials, and we have no concerns on any of these properties, we feel that they should just continue with the tax forfeit property classification.
Okay, thank you. John, anything else to add to that? None, okay, thank you. So looking for council action?
Move to receive and file.
If we just receive it, okay, as a motion, we don't have to, we can't do it, go ahead.
Thank you, no action means nothing.
Okay, nothing. So Council Johnson moves to receive and file with no action to be taken by the council, is there support? Support by Council Freely, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Can we take a really short break before we move into potential closed session? Let's take five minutes. Okay, we're back from taking a quick break here. Britt, next item on the agenda?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discuss property offer for parcel in Public Safety Development Center area, 1010 South Second Avenue, Virginia, Minnesota. We can close this portion of the meeting if we so choose. However, we don't necessarily need to. This has been vetted by our negotiating team. The purchase agreement for this parcel is in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Unless another councilor would like to move to closed session to discuss this, we'll continue to remain in open session and looking for council action regarding item four on the agenda. Councilor Beyondich.
I will make a motion that we just stay open and have it in open session for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Stay in open session. Thank you. I don't think we need a motion, do we?
There's no motion required unless we're going to close.
Okay, so but thank you for to remain open. So I read through this prior to the committee whole meeting. I have any problem moving forward with the recommendation based upon our team. Looking for council action. Well, referring to that, apparently, John, any questions or concerns about this? Any issues you have? Sorry, I didn't get you there.
Oh, you caught me mid-donut. No, we we had an appraisal and a review appraisal that backed the acquisition and all checked out. So I would support this.
Your recommendation is to move forward. Thank you.
I'll move the purchase agreement forward.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve the property parcel offer in 1010 Second Street, South Second Avenue. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? A support by Councilor Bearbo for a discussion. Item four on the agenda, it's the property offer for parcel in the Public Safety Development Area, which is 1010 South Second Avenue. So it's moved and supported for discussion. Discussion, Council Johnson.
This is the one that's in our electronic packets already presented with the regular from last week, correct? Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
Correct.
I just want to note before we sign it, you'll see that there's some handwriting on that packet. They are working on correcting it with our correct mailing address.
So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
We can, Mayor, we can do this all as one package, correct? Or do we need to do each one separate?
We're just talking about 1010 South Second Avenue today. Just the one.
Oh, just the one?
Just the one. The other information I handed out was just for your information.
Oh, okay.
There's only one item on the agenda.
That's why I was confused. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion regarding the property offer that's recommended to approval by our staff and negotiating team for the parcel in the Public Safety Development Area, which is this parcel is 1010 South Second Avenue? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda is discuss potential offer for sponsorship of mezzanine at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. This portion of the meeting may be closed as per cert as per Minnesota statute 13D05 subdivision three, C3.
And your recommendation is we go to closed session?
Correct.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to move to closed session regarding item five on the agenda.
I'll move to close.
Moved by Councilor Paulson, supported by Councilor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're now in closed session to discuss the potential offer for the sponsorship of the mezzanine at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.